Hi everyone again TJ Alls I 45 now in Clear Lake now welcome back to our second forum out of Nassau Bay covering the elections here city council election these are the candidates for position four on the ballot let me give a update on this ahead of time we were gonna have all the candidates together in earlier former forum but Mr Abby had a work conflict that came up late last night got that and so thankful to that John and Charles had agreed to adjust the time schedule so we could have all three candidates on at the same time so that all the voters can hear from them so thank you the three of you for being accommodating to that and with that also full disclosure ahead of time I 45 now I those that know me well will know this but our viewers may not I am a resident of Nassau Bay as well as my company being based just down the road in Lake City but I'm a resident of Nassau Bay also a division of our company that I don't have the day-to-day operations of called AMP digital delivery is handles the production for the city of Nassau Bay as well so that that part of my company I own the company but I don't run it day-to-day is operated by an employee of mine has the productions of the city contract with the city of Nassau Bay there's full disclosure so everyone knows upfront before we get going here of those positions so now with that out of the way let's get into and introduce our candidates tonight running for position four they are Charles Pulliam you can wave Charles if you like there there James Abbey and John Mahon thank you all for coming on with us here tonight we do appreciate it this probably go a little bit shorter than our last form since it's just the three of you here tonight we had a lively discussion very informative discussion as well along the way one of the things he kind of wrapped up with and this is what I'm gonna start off with this and Charles I'm gonna ask you this question first on that is about government civility we heard this from many of those who are running for the other positions talking about and the term was used by a few folks that just embarrassment of what they were seeing happening in city council meetings and not only that but this kind of the social media and stuff if elected how do you plan on bridging gaps and bringing more civility to how Nassau Bay government operates?
Well TJ first of all let me tell you thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to have a chat with the voters and to interact with my opponents if we can call them that I don't want to call them that because they're my neighbors and so I hope I can call them friend but to your question about civility you know that spurred that issue spurred a lot of people to approach me and ask me to enter the race as they started to see some of the turmoil that was happening in city council they asked me to speak about it and the reason for that is is calm and clarity is what my company does and it's what I do I help companies all over the country help out their conflict help out with their conflicts and when they have difficulty getting along and collaborating and working well together and so that with a combination of a lot of other things that I do and I have as innate skills within me that's why I was asked to run and that's why I agreed to because I really believe that I can bring a level of civility to the council listen I am not in the business of fighting people and fighting things the world is tough enough I spent eight years of my life in the military fighting for our country I don't want to fight in my neighborhood or in my community and so what I'd like to do is to be able to go in there with the willingness and the capability to bring people together and I've proved that over and over again for about 45 years now.
Thanks for that same question to you John on government civility is as you make if you're elected to council how do you plan on bridging gaps and and maybe healing some of the wounds that we're seeing that are happening out there right now?
Yeah no I certainly I don't think anybody's been happy to see how things are have deteriorated over the last six to nine months on that and honestly I struggle as to you know why we didn't cut it at the chase some simple decorum rules you know Roberts rules running there there were people that you know were angry for one reason or another and in many cases came out and did not quite understand the rules of of public speaking in that forum and we just failed to police that properly just let everybody know you get a chance to speak here and speak your mind but recognize there is some very basic rules on you're not going to identify somebody by name and you're not going to disparage there's no reason why we can't have you know conversation that involves disagreement but do it civilly and with comedy so that's what we've had in the past and I'm certainly what I bring to the table is certainly something that has for the years I was on council always brought that together so I think this is something that we fixed very quickly.
Gotcha James same question to you sir.
Thank you very much and TJ thanks for everyone accommodating my schedule today and thank you for the opportunity to be with you you know I can't argue with the other two I have to say that I agree with both of them the importance of civility is also part of the reason why I ran I had the ability I had opportunity to sit in one of the meetings and I was taken aback by the comments that were made and you would imagine that you know being neighbors as Charles said that you would live next to these people work with these people and we would be a bit more of a community and I think that we've got to like John said go back to some of this civility that we had in place of standard decorum a good debate a wholesome debate a debate is good for everyone but everyone has their own opinion and everyone can meet in the middle if we all try and I think that giving that having that ability is very important and full disclosure don't let these things be veiled transparency is a cornerstone for the democracy so you know so we need to have that cornerstone here in Nassau Bay we've got to have the transparency this ability and the ability for us to actually follow the regulations of a good debate like we're doing tonight or a discussion you know and I think that that needs to happen I also feel that it's very important to meet with the community more often than we do we go out we volunteer we go to events which is one thing and it's great that we do that but I think that you know and the importance of being able to sit down with people bridge what's needed in regards to their concerns engage with them have a good discussion it's also explain with them go back and forth let them understand and not just in that you know let's say that event but do it on the side you know one of the things I learned overseas while I was in the UK was they have these things that are city council members have surgeries not cutting into anybody but what they do is they have a time and a place weekly where they meet with the constituents to discuss any concerns or topics they'd like to discuss and I think that needs to happen more often we're neighbors we're community we're small enough to get together and have a conversation over a cup of coffee and understand one another I think that that's what we need to do more so just as a community as a whole but even more so in government you know I've spent most of my career doing just that bridging it between communities of residents of state federal and working with them to bring programs and projects to communities where I didn't even live now I live here I want to do the same thing and and I want to support those that that want to support doing that too whether I went or not.
And it comes into we've seen that Charles I remember you know you had said when at one of the early kind of heated city council meetings you you said a line that a lot of people kind of lauded to that was hey you know you know kind of check yourself everybody kind of check yourself here because you don't know who this position who this person's gonna be down the line you know they we are neighbors and the like but a practical way of how you know John you had mentioned about let's make sure the Robert rules of orders are in place and the like but you know how do you and I'll start with you on this one John but how do you set policies that get it here to and more importantly if you set a policy for council how is it then enforced because the mayor is gonna have the gavel at times but how is a council member do you do you step up and make sure that that civility continues on and the rules and the guidelines that are there for council to follow are followed?
For council I mean obviously he who has the gavel rules on that but as we've seen when when point of order is always an opportunity for someone to say let's get some clarity on this are we off base I can tell you as a very new councilman a number of years ago we would be an executive session which is a very specific topic needs to be discussed and our city attorney had to remind us regularly stay on topic this is not an open forum for you guys to discuss anything you want and understanding that okay there is a time and a place for for these things we are all neighbors the idea that we probably could all fit in a coffee shop and have had these conversations and I I'm not sure where we lost the ability to disagree and be agreeable that I'm just surprised that somebody having a different opinion has just been a reason to lash lash out as it and for me this is it's really simple we need to have people on back on council who are willing to hear alternative viewpoints agree with them or disagree with them and let people know by the way I disagree with you and I'm not voting for that we are going to move in another direction because that's that's how I'm moving forward and if people don't like that they can then vote that person out of you know out of their seat I mean that's the beauty of this democracy and at this level we you know we are about as close to a representative democracy as you get your your neighbor is the person making the decisions for your for your city.
James a kind of a simple follow-up of that too is how do you if you you know you're gonna have rules in place and how things are supposed to happen but if you're a member of council how do you as one single member make sure that the body politic in this case follows the rules how that accountability come in place?
Well I've had the luxury of being a company secretary for several companies and actually that job is making sure that everybody's on task and I think that there are rules and formats that just as John said and I know Charles will probably said the same thing that you must follow those but more importantly you've got to respect the people that you're on council with whether they're people you know whether you don't know and respect their opinions the importance of agreeing or not to agree is actually what we can do and that's important for everyone to understand that when a point of order is brought up that whoever has a gavel listens and everyone respects everyone that's up there I think that that's an important part of it too because like you know John said it very well we're all neighbors we'll see each other outside of city council we'll discuss things we won't be in a quorum of course which you don't want to do but you want to be able to have discussions and you want to be able to bring things to one another and have these debates where you're not doing it maliciously but you're doing it for the for the benefit of a debate so people understand the importance of what's going on and what that means to them and respect everyone else and just as John said as a democracy we have a vote we have a right to vote yes or no if you vote yes and it's unanimous that means everyone agrees it doesn't mean you're one side or another it means that you agree with what happened and you can vote against that which is everyone's right to do if you don't believe it and the last man out and you say you know what you guys can go that direction but my belief I don't I'll respect that a pit I'll respect what happens because that is a democracy and we have to do that that's the civility we need back in place.
Charles are we seeing you know I guess a lack of a better term is a trickle down or a flood down of the national politic coming down on the local level now and I don't know some of this may be that folks are just been cooped up for two years and they're tired of it and or do you think it's just something that's you know that's more about a character but if if get your thoughts on that and but also too is how would you you know how do you then govern on a body in which you may have disagreements that may go over the line at times?
Yeah you know I've noticed in some observations there seem to be potentially people that that mimic the behaviors of some politicians in the way they run campaigns so I know that probably happens a little bit but I would always be careful to diagnose a problem without really knowing all the facts you know that's one of the things I like to do is to gain a position of intellect before I decide what the real issue is but there is some evidence anecdotal evidence that that sort of thing is happening it's unfortunate because you know that brings up a broader issue of a lack of individualism and an individual voice that's necessary in running city city government you know the idea would be to bring individuals together in a unified fashion and not a uniform fashion right in order for it to be very effective and so again I can't quite diagnose the problem that exists completely but I will say that there's some evidence that there is some some mimicking mimicking of poor behaviors now as it relates to practical ways to handle this you know currently I'm the I'm the chair of governance committee on several committees right now the several boards and one of the ways that I handle it well let me just stop and say first I'm gonna I'm gonna say something that is the answer to that question for leadership and then secondly I'll give the practical solution for those people they're being governed the practical solution for leadership not to get crossways with people or not to get bent out of shape with people as they give you feedback is to remember that nothing said is everything but everything said is something you see leaders generally don't take enough time to ask enough questions to get enough information they shoot from the hip with decisions with on things without really getting enough information and without keeping their mind open to the fact that they may not have all of the details right so therefore some everything said is something so to take the time to hear people out even if the view seems wrong or opposing to hear them out because there's a possibility you may hear something that you hadn't heard before that might be helpful in solving a problem or making a decision and on the practical side for those people being governed it starts with setting the stage in terms of your behavior now or remind you nothing said is everything so this is not everything we can do but one thing you can do in managing it is setting an example for the people that are in these meetings in your own personal demeanor and behavior secondly reminding those people before they get up to speak about what the expectation is not necessarily the policy procedure or process it's people over policy procedure process appeal to the people remind them of the need for civility and the fact that we're all neighbors and we can start there bring that type of clarity and don't take it for granted that people understand that when they come into a meeting especially if they're impassioned about something.
And maybe something of establishing a culture correct as well when people understand that correct on that point um it a lot of what we can kind of you know the I guess you would call whether it's the anger passion or whatever else I mean this is the busiest Nassau Bay election I've ever recalled in in my history of I've recovering the town before moving here many years ago some years covering for many years before moving here is how the city managers removal separation agreement retirement was handled many folks that felt that that was done in secret behind closed doors or not even closed doors not even done I will bring up our last form accusations of actually illegally along the way and I don't want to give too much credence to that without you know having some firm proof there but let me start with you on on this John as you watch that process not if it was right or wrong let's just agree right off the bat the council has the right to say this is who we want as our city manager yea or nay matter what there the votes done from there but how it was handled including members of council saying they were left out of the loop of this even being discussed how do you how would you want approach that type of decision differently and if you suspected that other members of your council were essentially violating the open meetings act or violating the law how would you handle it at that point as a single member of council?
Right so a lot to unpack there city council has three basic functions they are there to write the regulations for the city they are there to approve a budget and they are there to hire and fire a city manager who is our operating manager for the city that is the function of the government it is absolutely within the purview of city council to say we are no longer pleased with the performance of our city manager and we are going to separate from that the problem I had and I started a little bit of a firestorm when I sent a letter to city council the night that that happened and I said I'm aware that there's gonna be a discussion about firing the city manager but I don't think there's ever been a conversation put on the agenda to discuss where where this was and that became my the crux of the problem for me process versus outcome on that I believe at least two people on that that dais that night were completely unaware of the intent that was was put in front of them and therefore what you what was occurring there I don't know how it came about and I just felt there was very little deliberation it seemed very rash and left us with this five-month gap with without a city manager we've always been able to at least have a layover a lap over where the city manager who was until very recently considered an exceptional city manager and was being praised as such had to leave that week immediately so you know I again TJ I'm not sure if somebody can actually with with fact any factual basis state exactly what happened but for many of us out there it did seem like there was a rash decision that to jump at that and that rash decision was a costly decision at the very least we spend a whole lot of money moving on you know separating between our city manager and if there was a reason to do it in such a quick and expeditious manner well then we really should know that because at the end of the day the money that we expended to separate from the city manager is city funds it's the money that we had to use for things that we have the very limited budget we have being a small city requires that we have to be good stewards of the money that we were in charge of.
And let me get the second part of my question though so I give you a chance to answer it so we can go on to Charles after this but if if you notice something like that whether you're on the good the one side of an issue or the other and you notice what you suspect to be something that was just not being handled in the most transparent way how do you handle that as if you're elected to that body?
Okay so that's you we are obligated as officers anybody who has a position would be obligated to bring that forward if they actually had true facts if you suspected something that is very different and that is something that you're probably going to have to probably discuss strongly with the city attorney potentially an outside counsel if you were concerned that the city attorney wasn't available to give you that information but I would certainly address that with my colleagues on the dais on that but if I knew for for a fact that there was something that we're obligated by law to do that so.
Charles same question to you there on that is that you know when you particularly I'm just trying to get to if you see something that you think your fellow council members are doing wrong you're one you're just one person and you can't yourself cross the line and there how do you you know reel that back in or make sure that the public either it's more information or that you put a stop to it somehow?
Yeah I've dealt with this issue several times before and it's a it's a dicey one it's dicey in the in the fact that leadership and situations like this have two real responsibilities and number one it's to mitigate risk for the organization or in this case the the government the city government but then also to protect the personnel information of that individual and protect their futures as best you can going forward and so I do understand that there are oftentimes some situations in which leadership cannot share all of the details of what happened in a termination and if city government or if leadership is trustworthy and trusted well then that would work out right and just seems like there might have been some trust issues as it relates to this situation but I'll go back and say that there's a simple principle that I use in dealing with with my peers as relates to potential wrongdoing doing a simple philosophy that says I coach corporately and reprimand in private and so if there was an issue that wasn't in this particular case it was is transparency if it was appropriate and I felt everyone had the issue or the concern well then I would bring that up in a in a larger setting but if it's something as sensitive as this like transparency and I thought there was some specific wrongdoing then that would be absolutely a time for me to leverage closed session to address that issue to where I could lay all of my cards on the table and the expectations would be that all of the other members would lay their cards on the table and we would address the issue there is no way that I could see me allowing something like that to happen unchecked and so I would I would definitely leverage the close closed session to address that.
Gotcha same 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 question to you sir.
I appreciate that yeah I can say that I didn't know who previously the city manager was still don't know that person but I'd like to speak to one important thing here that needs to be brought up is that Texas I was a state employee I was a state employee at Texas A&amp;M for several years and in the state of Texas we're at will which you know unfortunately that's how we are at will employees at the beck and call of your supervisor you can be let go without getting a reason that is that is what goes on in the state of Texas here that's at will employment as such you know that's what we have to live with whether you're working for someone in that situation or you're operating in that environment so that's important to know that that is how we we do business in Texas with employees the second thing to that that I think is very very important and I think we've hit on some of these things and maybe not as much as we should but separation agreements I of course work at the state separation agreements are typically put in place to protect everyone involved and I think that they're they're good things because basically it's no harm no foul and we move forward in a good way how that's brought about and how that's done is a different story and if it was something where I was on the council and I was seeing something that was being done illegal I am legally obligated as an officer of that city to go forward and discuss that if it's with the city attorney then it's with the city attorney to look at how we mitigate and what we do I think that it would be unjust not to do that but also I believe that if you're on the council in that situation that a consensus has to be made and with that you have to follow through whether unfortunately you like it or not in the democracy and the vote and how that's handled the vote you're going to have to go with that and as such I think that you can have your opinions but if it's cast underneath the legal binding agreement then I think it's important that everyone who's an officer for that city or that state has to keep that to themselves you know the way that that is I believe actually you get out of something like that is actually by wavering your rights and typically it's done by both parties so I think that getting to that point of of a situation where you're having to implement something like that highlights that something happened what that is I can tell you what it is but it's important that you as an elected official your opinion is brought up you follow the rules and regulations there's stipulated by the state we are governed by the state in this case and and you should go forward with that and I agree you know as a good leader you've got to be able to listen to what's going on and also as a good leader you also have to know when to listen and when not to talk and when not to go around other people and go as a can join force as as one I tend to think this also goes back to civility and another point that I think you brought up you know Charles discussed it which is the divisiveness of how things are going we have many platforms so we can go out and put things out in the ether and the best way to ever do that is going and talking to somebody and I think that that's something we've got to do and to speak to the people that are involved as elected officials we're obligated to do that just like John said we are obligated to manage the money of the city we are obligated to ensure that we spend it to the best of our ability we're obligated to those people who voted us in and to the people who didn't because that's what we're here for we work for everybody in this regard and I think that that's important for us to to be able to understand that and as a city council as a government to be able to then implement that civility just like you were talking about before TJ in the first in the first piece you've got to be able to do that in the sense of what we would do here in transparency in government we followed the regulations that were put forward by the secretary sorry by the attorney general of the state of Texas the open meetings act and that guidance is there we follow that we should do that but also we should listen to people be able to give their I think it's three minutes in the city council meetings where they can speak bring up their piece listen to them and do it more often so that we can go into and maybe do it outside of that where we can meet with them and do it more often so that we can. meet with them and do it more often so that we can actually go into executive decision and move the city forward. Because that's what we're there to do. We're there to listen to the community and move things forward and progress as we should.
Speaking of moving the city forward, let's go into now Paul McCarty has been hired as the new city manager. He starts June 1st and will be coming in. And I'll start with you on this one, James, and then. And then to Charles. You know, as it comes in, and I don't know if you've met him personally or not, I, you know, as again, full disclosure here, I've covered Paul since he was actually working for Galveston County, Countess County Judge Jim Yarborough's office, actually, 20 plus years ago, before he went to work for CCI SD. So I've known him for that long as as a source and someone I covered as well. But what do you think of the hire? What do you think of the process that was used to come to that decision? Here, there are some folks that were concerned about the decision being made before the new council was in, no matter how the outcome was. But part of it, too, is, hey, it's been five months. We need to have someone in that in there, too. So there's both sides of that coin. But that and what are your goals that you want to see the city manager accomplish? And I'll start with you, James.
No, TJ, I appreciate that. And I haven't heard Judge Yarborough's name in ages. So.
They go, when they hear the name, they go, who? And I just saw it on the other night.
That's too funny. Well, I can say, TJ, I have not had the pleasure of of meeting him, unfortunately. You know. My view is, and this is my personal, I feel that he'll, I feel and I'm confident that he'll be able to handle the position very, very well. When you think about where he's been, CCI SD over 20 years, he's dealt with major growth period of the of the school district, huge during that period, handled many issues across that the CCI SD system, including several hurricanes, weather events and COVID-19, you know, and he's been able to address, I believe, several of these things to get things up and operational again after the situations. I think that's very important. And where he comes from, you know, you mentioned Judge Yarborough, you've got to be able to, in that position he had previously, to bridge both city, county, and state, because the requirements that you have to meet, your constituents are across, you know, CCID SD is everywhere. We're in Galveston County, we're in Harris County. There are several things that you have to be able to bend and be able to make things happen. And I think, you know, when you look at the skill set to be there for that long and be successful as he was, I think that that's important for what we would want to see of somebody who would understand our situation. One, where we are today, we handle the same situations as CCI SD in many cases with infrastructure, with the situations of the weather being down, hurricanes coming back online. You know, it's important to be able to do that, but it's important to be able to bridge the constituents and have the conversations that need to be had. I feel that he'd, you know, with where we are and, you know, being able to work in an environment where he has the support of a city council as a team, I feel strongly that he'd be able to transfer all the skills that he's got and be a success in what he would do here and actually create quite a bit of benefit for Nassau Bay residents pretty darn fast.
John, same question to you. What do you think of the how the process was handled in hiring Paul in that position? And then also, what are your goals for the new city manager, particularly if you're elected to council?
Yeah, well, I want to congratulate Paul on getting the position, and we look forward to having him starting as soon as he can. Our chief of police, Tim Crummies, has done a terrific job doing double duty, but the business of running this city is just not, it needs a city manager in place. The charter puts the city manager who is in charge, we need somebody running, running the city. City council is there to advise and oversee, but not running the city. So we're very happy to find that we had so many great candidates and Paul was selected. I've only heard wonderful things about him, not only from council, but also from staff. And I think that's very important. This city is run by professionals who come to work every day. This is what they do for a living, and they take care of our city. And if you ever wonder how important their jobs are to them, pick any bad day hurricane or something slighter than that. They are here fixing our infrastructure, making sure our power, making sure our water, our sewer are not back at their house putting sandbags up. They are fantastic folks, and having somebody that they can look to and and run this city as well as grow this city, I think, is very important. One of my goals for him would specifically be with staff, that he makes sure that they can all reach their own individual goals. There are plenty of people who are just happy where they are, but lots of folks want to grow in their in their jobs and the opportunities. As the chief operating officer of Nassau Bay, the man wears a lot of hats. He's, we have a very small budget, a couple million dollars, six and a half million dollars is in our general fund, but we are managing over 24, 25 million dollars just this year alone, when you add in the grants for the lifting and the projects that are going on. All of a sudden, our budget is a lot bigger. It's a lot more money that needs to be managed, and it needs to be managed well. Getting him in up to speed as soon as possible will be a good task for this council that does get elected and making sure he has the tools to do. So. I think it's a tall order for him, and I'm looking forward to meeting him. Like I said, I've only heard good things, saw his resume, but have yet to get a chance to meet him, but looking forward to either as a citizen or a councilman, let him know what my priorities are.
Gotcha. Charles, same question to you. Where, you know, what are your goals for the new city manager? And what do you think of the process used to bring him in?
Yeah, you know, on the on the process, you know, I'm not really in a position to answer what the process was. You know, I, you know, it's funny how, you know, a lot of smart people get hired and put in positions, and they do things, and all of a sudden, the people from the outside looking in think they're idiots, you know? And so I'm not going to jump out there and say that there was any impropriety or the process, it wasn't done with complete fidelity until I know that for sure. And so from at this point, then I trust that the process was done with fidelity and the best foot forward by all council members. I hear that Paul is is the right person for the job based on the scuttlebutt on the street. And I have no reason at this point to believe that he's not the right person for the job. Now, having said that, I've been around long enough to know that a person's job history is only evidence of that history, right? And so we don't know his past, that his past success would be any real evidence that he's going to be successful here, although we want to bring him in and give him a good shot and give him all the supports that he needs to do that. You know, if something were to happen, heaven forbid that he wasn't a fit, well, then, as a leader, we have to be prepared to address ineffectiveness by giving lots of coaching and help and support until it makes sense to do something else. And lastly, I would say is my goals for him. One of the things I also adhere to, and I've talked a lot about philosophy, but that's kind of the way that I run my leadership style, is that I have a philosophy that says, don't move any fences until you know why they were built. And so I think it would be irresponsible for me to shoot from the hip, from the outside looking in and say, okay, I know what I want to have the new city manager do on day one. And so to answer that question, I'm going to go in the broadest context possible. And that is, I know, based on the fact that we deal with a lot of natural disasters and difficulty within our region. My hope would be that the city manager would be an expert or have access to experts that could help us with scenario planning, right? And so if you remember at the beginning of the pandemic, you might have noticed that HEB was out front of every other grocery store. They were first with PPE, new supply chains, they had systems set up, they were ready to go immediately. And that's because 10 years prior, they had gone through a scenario planning process, which was actually borrowed from the Coast Guard and developed in the 70s, where they planned for that particular scenario. Now, the difference between that and disaster preparedness is disaster preparedness would say, if this thing happens, then we're going to do these things. Scenario planning, it says, these things are going to happen. And so what things do we need to do today to ensure we're able to sustain during that inevitable thing? It's just a different way of thinking about things. And so my hope is, is that anyone responsible for running a city at the level of our city manager and our city government, that they be well versed in scenario planning or have access to someone that is.
HEB and Waffle House always get mentioned in natural disasters. In fact, as you point out, a lot of the coverage I've done over the years on national, natural disasters, the federal government actually uses the Waffle House map to figure out logistics. So, yeah, you bring up a good point there, Charles, on the, which kind of goes into part of that, when you have to plan out things, is infrastructure and along the way of those things. And I'll start with you on on this one, Charles, is that roads, water, sewer, and infrastructure, you know, the generic term of infrastructure of how you look at it, just to your take on how the city's plan is being implemented? Do you think it's being handled well? And what do you want to see either sped up or projects that may not be on that list now that you think now, based on what we've learned pandemic wise, last storms and the like, needs to be addressed?
All right. Well, thank you for that question. Well, first of all, for the way things are being handled now in terms of the plan implementation, I'm just not sure if it's being handled as swiftly as possible. I, again, would trust that the leadership in place right now is executing that plan according to schedule as best they can. And so I'm going to assume that and have faith that that's true until I find out otherwise. Now, as it relates to going forward and what I think, ultimately, I think the, one of the biggest issues with long term strategic plans is something like, as an example, a pandemic. So two years ago, every person that had a long term strategic plan, in business especially, had that had a plan that was three, four, five, 10 years out, that plan was completely useless. And maybe that's strong to say completely useless, but it became a point to where, you know, there was no COVID was not in most people's plan. And the plan was too far, looking out too far in the future without a lot of checks and balances along the way. So what I'm saying is that I'm a fan of long term strategic planning. I think you have to have a vision for the future and some idea of what you want to do. But the plan must have checks and balances to the point of being able to have continuous checks on the plan and make real time changes to that chant, to that plan as necessary. And so one of the worst things that I think can happen as it relates to city infrastructure is for us to put a long term plan in place with materials, costing, you know, just right aways, all of that, without knowing what the future is. It's possible that the materials can get better, can get cheaper, there are new techniques, new rules, new laws that come along that we must be able to take advantage of. And so as it relates to infrastructure, I say, I like to take a long term view, but hyper focused on the very next step that's next.
Same question for you, John, on infrastructure. You know, it's, it's, it's the one thing that you can add, as Charles brought up a good point, you can have a master plan, but it can go sideways pretty quick, whether it's pandemic or supply chain issues, inflation, even those things that you didn't anticipate. Where do you see the city is right now, where it's headed, and what would you like to see done to the plan that maybe not there now?
I'm glad you asked this question, because this, I mean, it's certainly the crux of a lot of things that we've been working on for a number of years, and it happens to be something that, on the logistics side, is something that I've been very much involved in, in my professional life, as well as a citizen here in Nassau Bay. Specifically, we have 50 to 60 year old infrastructure that has passed its lifecycle. And we've known several years going into this and have been building towards this. Money that we took out in bonds specifically in doing this in phases, so that now we're not doing $15 million over a 15 year period all at once. We were doing this in a phased approach. We are hopeful that at some point, we may even beget some benefit from the county or the state in assistance of that. This all was built on federal dollars 60 years ago. It's a, it's a very large cost for a small city to manage, and it is a very large project that we're going to have to have people in place for an extended period of time to understand where we were and how and how it's being implemented. Phase one is being implemented and you know, I feel much better, certainly with a city manager and or specific project manager on that and reporting on that on a regular basis. But I've, just being in the neighborhood, I've seen a lot of the work being done, and it does seem to be moving along very well. So phase one does seem to be well underway and taking care of it. Phase two will follow that and has been partially funded already. Again, you know, the, we mentioned things that you can't anticipate. Our, our staff specifically came to us and said, it may be a good idea to go ahead and borrow the money now, because it looks like it may get a lot more expensive in the future. So we were able to borrow the needed funds to get a lot of this work done at incredibly low rates. And because of the fantastic work they did to give us that great bond rating, we were able to get at historical low numbers costing. So it is a double edged sword. You borrow a bunch of money, you then have a very few thin years where you have to be able to tighten your belt and not be able to address other things because of that. But all the more reason why good stewards need to be at the helm, because we have a lot of money that has been borrowed. We won't be able to borrow for the next couple of years, should something else come up. But we, as a council and the city staff, made a strong educated guess that things like inflation would would certainly erode quickly our ability to borrow and fund these projects. So that was one of the things that good foresight on staff and council in the past.
James, same question to you about the infrastructure, you know, where, you know, as you look at it, is it, you know, how is the plan being implemented? You may not know the details of the plan, but you know, how is it as you see it? I mean, you know, doesn't take, you don't have to go too far to see backhoes sitting on people's property up and down. And, you know, one water line goes out and then the next, obviously. But then where, what, you know, where would you like to see, you know, the plans go on that down the line?
Well, TJ, this is, this is really near and dear to me, because this is the primary reason why I decided to run. You know, we are in a community that is affected by weather events. We are in a community that is affected by aged infrastructure. My experience over the past years has been working, bringing projects like that to communities that I was working in at the A and M system. I did, I can tell you, four roads and two parks and surveys that brought in $2 million to a community that never had had any opportunity to have a road or even parks where they were growing, and they had flood issues. But I think what I'd like to say on this is, it's very important that we have to remember that, you know, we're part of a wider community. Several years back, I was tasked by the Chancellor of Texas A and M to go down to A and M Galveston and review a project that two professors put forward. And you might know it, Ike Dyke, you know, that was done with the hurricane issues we had there, flooding in the bay. All of these things that happened have now become a major infrastructure project for the whole Bay Area, not just us, but all the way up to Belmont and all the way down to Corpus. And Army Corps of Engineers have been tasked to do this. And the important thing here is that we have a voice at the table, because we need to lead in what we do with infrastructure. Yes, we have aged infrastructure. It's got to be a tiered approach. They're taking care of some of the work now, but I also know that there's money at the state. Texas Water Development Board has funds and grants that we can go after, and we should be doing that on a regular basis for water infrastructure. Additionally, we need to be looking at the assessments of Cal Bayou and also Clear Creek. Inside of the last stakeholder meeting at the Bay, the Bay Area or the Galveston Bay Barrage, it was highlighted that the two key areas were not only the ship channel, because we produce 90% of the aviation fuel of the U.S., but Clear Creek. And if we're a pivotal piece of that, that infrastructure, no matter what we put in today, is going to get aged very quickly if we're not mitigating and working with those communities around us. As such, one of the things we also should be doing is talking to the county. I don't know if you recall San Sebastian, Judge Emmett, that was done with county money. We should be working with the county, pulling taxpayers' monies back into the city. We should be working with the county, pulling taxpayers' monies back into the city. Because that allows us to actually attract other people in to grow that tax base that we want, to handle residents and the growth of the city. You know, uh, I work in infectious diseases. I sit on a couple of committees that actually handle and deal with things, uh, like pandemics and epidemics. Um, and one of the things we'd like to say after telling everybody after the swine flu outbreak down in South Texas, we'd like to say, you've got to be aware of the situation to be able to mitigate. If you're unaware, you're caught with your pants down, unfortunately. And, um, one of the things that we did, uh, working with Texas A&amp;M, working with the state of Texas is the Colorado River Authority actually has monitors along the river. You know, you went to UT, you know how it goes. Flow comes down, goes out, floods all of the lowlands. We can actually monitor Cal Bayou and Clear Creek to identify if we've got rainwater and flow coming down or if we've got surge coming in. And I think that what we have to do is we have to be cognizant of what's going on around us in the community and particularly what's going on in, in Clear, Clear Lake. So if you look across this offshore harbor, you'll see the bulkheads that have gone up. You'll see that they're very, very high. You look down at the $90 million development of, uh, Lago and also of, uh, Taylor Lake. You'll see that they've raised those up. Look at ours, we're low. We're prone for flooding. Mitigation has to come in. The money that's spent on infrastructure that's going in place, if we don't mitigate, then we're going to have issues inside of our system. I think that former city council members and the city have done a great job. But we've seen with these, uh, you know, weather events, whether it's, uh, flooding, coming just from the rain or it's storm surge or it's a hurricane, things will happen and we've got to be prepared. We have to be aware of what's going on. And I think that integrating and working with the state, money that's there that we can go after and get, we should be going to the state and getting money from the state. We should be going to the county, working with the county, pulling money in that we've put out in taxes so that we can actually build the things that we need to. Aged infrastructure, we've got it. There are residents here that are running on the same plumbing. I can tell you that we play whack-a-mole with the water system and the fact that you have them working on one piece and within that same day, you'll have three other breaks along the line. And when you're working on these things, you've got to have that great communication with the residents because they don't know what's going on. They'll see something here, yet their water's out. So communication's critical. Working with others is critical. Working with the other communities around us is critical on all the infrastructure because it's a complete system. It's not just us. We have our water system. We've got to protect that water system, but we've got to make sure that we're also protecting those around us. Because when we, I hate to say this, but when you raise the boat, we raise it for everybody.
Right, yeah.
Looking there, but I, I think that's important and we've got to work with this. We've got to work with the county. We've got to work with these other cities around us and have a place at the table of prominence.
All right. Um, and you, you'd brought up Ike Dyke, uh, you know, in, in Nassau Bay, there's the pumps. Yeah, out there. Uh, but at some point, the pumps can't, can only handle so much money when Clear Lake goes up. That's where that water is going. So basically you're pumping water to come right back into the city. One of the things, I don't know, I, I brought this up the last city election because I, I was, happened to be sitting on a committee in which one of the things that some folks have been looking ahead to is, um, Clear Lake itself. James, you brought up Clear Creek. I mean, uh, Nassau Bay sits on the end of Clear Creek. Uh, so it's not like you can, when you're, you know, like folks, I was, had a forum in Friendswood last week in which the drainage district and council were both talking about improvements along Clear Creek and, you know, making sure it's banked a little bit more on the sides, can hold more water. Well, if they do that up that stream, guess what happens? That's all coming down the river, uh, down the creek, I should say, to League City and, uh, and, uh, and Nassau Bay. Uh, and it's going to get down here and it's going to run into Clear Lake. One of the things that, uh, has been looked at is after, after Harvey brought this up, is that the silt buildup in Clear Lake is to the point that in some points, and this, if you can't get a boat through it, uh, depending on what tide it is, uh, that means the silt's going to build up. And that means also too, when the water comes down, it really has nowhere, it's running into obstacles and it'll back up a lot faster. Now, the Army Corps of Engineer does not, engineers does not consider Clear Lake to be a navigable waterway. So it's not much they can do there, but would you support some type of proposal with, you talk about doing groups? I'll start with you, James, on this, you know, a regional thing, League City, Webster, others that, you know, Kima, uh, Seabrook, who all sit along the lake front there of a study or something to get done to figure out a way to get some dredging done so that more water can go into the lake and then eventually out to the bay. And I'll start with you.
Yeah, no, TJ, I, I think you've hit the nail on the head and I, I absolutely believe it is critical for us to do that. You look over to League City and the developments they've done along Clear Creek, you can also see right behind Top Golf. You know, they've raised it up. That, that is 18, probably about 18 feet. I probably should go over and measure it, you know, just to make sure. But I, looking at it, eyeing it up, you can see that, but this is a high-growth area. We've had population growth down here and I believe if I'm correct, from the last time Army Corps of Engineers surveyed this, it was about 15 years ago around Cal Bayou and Clear Creek. And I recall they dredged when they put in, uh, Ygrve Bay. And I could tell you that you could actually jump off that bridge, not that I did it, into the water and you were safe. You wouldn't break a legs. But I also know that out there in the, uh, at Iran, at the Duck Pond, I used to sail a laser. That was a 12-foot mast and I could tip it over and flip it over without it even touching the bottom. Now I believe it's about three feet across the board. So the sediment's a big thing because you have that displacement of water. It moves that sediment down. You're a hundred percent right. I would highly support, and I believe this is also part of what's going on inside of the barrage is Pasadena has done some work where they've had flow that's come down. They've cemented up some of those, uh, retention areas that they, they have. That was part of a plan in the flood plain, that's Harris County flood plain. So they've done that piece and they're supposed to be transitioning down to us with that. I, I would a hundred percent go after because as you said, you lower that down, you get that, that close to bottom, the flow rates are incredible. And again, uh, you know, I'll throw this out there that for the benefit of everybody, the creek starts somewhere. If you're monitoring the water and the flow rate, like they do up at the Colorado River Authority, you can see what's coming and you can be aware of what's going to happen. You can make those calls. You can put things in place and I think a unified grouping between the, the cities, both Gauzin County and Harris County, it makes really good sense. Um, you know, those, back over there, you know, TJ, you've been around long enough to, and I grew up here. There used to be nothing across the way over there. It was just fields, you know? And now look at the build. I mean, you look out across, uh, South Shore Harbor there from the conference center, they moved that up. And it's important that we have a, a conjoined view of what we're doing along that area. But I believe also that inside of what's been proposed for the Bay Area barrage.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's someone spoke over you there in one of the other rooms, so.
No, that's okay. I was just saying that I think within that program there, uh, of the Bay Area barrage, that there is that piece of dredging that actually is supposed to happen. But again, if we're not part of the party, we're left out. And understandably, I know that, uh, other areas and, and Bayhap is representing us in that. But I think it's important that at least one or two people from the city council participate because this is an important factor for us as a city.
Got, uh, Charles, to you on that as well, uh, and specifically on that Clear Lake area, as I said, I, and, and how I even asked the question about it or someone brought it up was we were out on a boat one time and our prop hit. And I was like, wait, this water is supposed to be a lot deeper here and it wasn't. And, and that affects too, if Clear Creek's coming down, it running into that, uh, you get a good spit and we're going to have water standing on Upper Bay. So I just try to give your take on that as well, Charles.
Yeah, well, uh, thank you for bringing up this question and I'm not as technically astute, uh, as, as my colleague, uh, James is as relates to these matters. Uh, but I have been, uh, on boats, uh, in the lake, in a situation where the, the propeller has hit, uh, sediment. And, and the long-time residents here said that, you know, it didn't happen, uh, many years ago. And so I do realize that, uh, that it's a problem. And, uh, one of the things that, that James said that I thought was, was profound and it was that, you know, to collaborate with the region, uh, always makes sense, right? And so especially people, we have a joint issue with the body of water. It would make sense for us all to come together and address it if it's an issue. And having said that, I think we'd have a hard time selling to the citizens of Nassau Bay, having just talked about infrastructure. Say, hey, we're going to go dredge the lake and forget about, you know, the, the sewage standing in your backyard.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I would be careful to make it a priority, but I would say certainly it'd be something we should start some dialogue on.
John, same question to you, sir, about, uh, about Clear Lake and that, yeah, Clear Creek.
Um, there, so we've been looking at this now for over 10 years. Ike, um, made it very obvious to us what, what our exposure was. Uh, the, the storm surge had been talked about for years. It, it finally showed up. And for some of us, including myself, it was, it was in my living room. So it's, it's near and dear to me. Um, uh, Harvey.
Maybe not so dear, but.
Solution is, but the solution, Harvey was the back half of that, that same issue that, uh, James has now talked about, uh, very well. All that water has to come somewhere. We're in between it. This, I, I sort of alluded to this earlier, the fourth job of city council. There are three things that we do internally. The fourth has to be, we are part of a much larger organization that needs to speak with one voice. We have all these waterfront communities together. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars. There are, uh, the Army Corps study is third, 20, uh, $38 million this year alone, I believe, just to do the environmental impact. We, we are finally moving ahead, a decade of hard work by a number of folks, uh, doing that. We need to be at the table because it is very quick for other members of Harris County to say, let's get rid of that water that's in our bayou and move it down so it's not flooding us. We need to be able to say, yes, that's important, but it can't become our problem second. Uh, a much more coordinated part of that. The way you do that is being part of a much larger group. Harris County, uh, Mayor's and Citizens Group meets every month. Uh, Mayor, uh, Bechtel over there in Morgan's Point, who happens to be the chair of the, uh, the Coastal Barrier, project itself is, is a regular at that. We need council to carry that word forward. Make sure we are, um, aligning with everybody else. And so that becomes whoever is running this city next, whoever is, uh, supporting them as council is going to need to be part of that effort much more so, so that we speak as one voice, as a region, to the state and to the federal government, uh, on the, on both those items. And we, uh, there is nothing more critical, uh, as far as our, our home values, uh, the safety of our city, uh, the ability of our infrastructure to last the next 50 years without getting this right. This is a 10, if not 20-year project, uh, to get it right. But it's, it's all coming together now. Uh, that Army Corps of Engineer, uh, study, uh, just getting funded now. Uh, we're, we're beginning to pick up the pace and we, we need to have the right people, uh, not just in Nassau Bay, but, uh, representing us up at the state, uh, as, as well on that.
TJ, I, I am sorry, I'd really want to hit on this. It's very important because, you know, this is something that is impacting everybody and will impact the values and actually the attraction of Nassau Bay for businesses to come. And being able to collaborate with these other mayors, that's great. But it's the city managers, it's the county judge, it's the folks that are actually operational inside of this that you've got to be able to understand and have that dialogue with. Because even though you're chairing a committee in regards to this, you have to have a broader consensus of being able to bring something to the table that is going to be valuable and that voice has to be heard. It's not about crying wolf. It's about how we join up as a team and collaborate. I think that, you know, this is very critical on many levels for the fact that it will impact infrastructure for the city and the spend that we have right now. It'll, it'll impact the attraction and the ability to diversify the tax base. It will impact the values of the homes. It'll impact the flood insurance. It will impact more and more as we go along. You know, it, it does.
Comes down to, it all comes down to a lot of factors from taking care of that one thing. I just want to keep it moving here, James. Yeah, on that. And, and maybe it takes to have someone as stubborn and as smart as, uh, Bill Merrill was. Speaking of Ike Dyke, so much so that the plan has changed so much, but it's still called the Ike Dyke by many people who refer to that, even though they've tried to change the name a hundred times, everyone's going to call it Ike Dyke because Bill kind of figured it out early on, uh, of what to do. One of the livelier topics we had, uh, back, uh, in, in the, in the previous forum was talking about code enforcement. And, uh, in dealing with that, not on the residential property side of things, but also the apartment complexes and the like. And I want to make a, a kind of some clear when we get on the apartment side of things. This is not about saying, you know, at least my question is not based on saying, all right, apartment's bad, get rid of. It's more along the lines of people who live there are our neighbors here. They need to be, uh, taken care of and not being living in, in really bad squalor. Let me start with you on that, Charles, just the overall about code enforcement, unkept properties and what the city needs to be doing. Does it need to be more aggressive? Does it need to, to more, you know, uh, carrot approach or a combination of both? You know, versus the hammer versus the carrot along the way.
Yeah, well, TJ, it really depends on the people on, on the other side of the, of the desk. You know, I, I never go into a situation like that armed with what I know for sure I'm going to do. But I come equipped with being able to go any direction that, uh, I need to go in any given situation. You know, I'm going to tell you, the last city council made, meeting in which the, a few of the residents that live in, in the Sapphire, uh, apartments spoke about the conditions of those apartments and you could hear audible gasp in, in that city council meeting. I don't believe that the, that, that the residents of city council, uh, or the residents of Nassau Bay are, are against apartments or against people living in apartments. I think that they were appalled at what they heard. And I believe that there was enough energy in the room to make me believe that something is more is going to get done with those apartments. Now I do understand, uh, that there's been years and years and years of effort, uh, to do various things in each of the apartment complexes that we have here. And I don't know at this point why that the execution of whatever plans were put in place, uh, was not effective. Uh, but I do plan to find out. But you know, like with any other citizen in Nassau Bay, my commitment is to do everything I can to take care of the citizens of Nassau Bay, whatever that means. It doesn't matter if they live in an apartment. It doesn't matter if they live in, in a, a town home, a large home or a small home. I, I want to go in and represent the people. And so my commitment is, is to going in with the ability to ask the right questions, think strategically, develop a plan for things and execute those plans with fidelity. And so whatever that, uh, that, that means in terms of success, winning is what I like to do. And so ultimately I'd like to be able to win by helping our citizens, both in the apartments and outside of those apartments, uh, with, with helping them by asking great questions and putting a great plan in place and executing.
John, you know, same question to you about, uh, code enforcement, the unkept properties, again, residential side, you know, single-family residential side and the apartment issues, which are, you know, both, uh, a concern of many folks right now.
Right. Um, well, I'm, uh, Charles, my hat's off to you because I, I, I think you answered that fantastic. The only thing I would change there is, uh, what we will do as a city council is set that expectation. It is a private property. It will be expected that that owner, now new owner, uh, will meet that expectation. Let's not have misaligned understanding of what we expect. It is unacceptable, the conditions that those people have been living in. And you're absolutely right. We, I mean, people were literally appalled that they were hearing these things, like they can't be that bad. Nobody would ever allow it to get that bad. Um, and it's just, it, it, it's, it's flat out wrong. We as a city have got to get in there with the, the new owners. They have said all the right things. We need to make sure that they follow through on the, uh, uh, on those right things and take care of that property, those property. Specifically, uh, that Sapphire, um, uh, single-family homes that have been, uh, unkempt, you know? We did have two hurricanes and so there was a, a little bit of empathy and sympathy, um, and maybe a slowdown on, uh, uh, council's part over the years, as far as code enforcement was, because people were getting back on their feet. There were a lot of houses that were, were not being lived in for quite some time. But, uh, city council, uh, specifically took a stance several years ago and said, okay, time has gone by, it is time for you, uh, to make decisions with your properties and take care of that. Um, and so I, we, we all want to live in a neighborhood that is, is well-kept and that we don't have rats or, um, uh, roofs falling in, as, as was the case in some of these, uh, houses that have been condemned over the years. It, it took too long and there were a number of, uh, the people that live next to those houses, uh, they have had to put up, uh, with, uh, their own homes, uh, being of less value because there is a decrepit, uh, dilapidated home, uh, which, uh, has, has had, uh, wild animals in. which has had wild animals in or other things happening. It's it's something that going forward, I am very confident. We now have a code enforcement officer. We are able to look forward to that and and hold people's feet to the fire where it needs to be held. Again, if anybody's had their house severely damaged, they know it's a long and arduous trek to just to get back to where you were before. And but we made exceptional progress on that. The number of houses that have now been been lifted, the number of houses that or properties that have been corrected or removed so that someone can start afresh on those. So I'm absolutely for firm code enforcement going forward.
James, same question to you, sir.
Thank you. So I'm a person who believes in doing what it says on the tin. The founders of Nassau Bay have a charter and in that charter, they stipulated sections in there that need to be followed and enforced. And I recommend both the former and the current city council to go back and read the charter. I had residents of what I know as Balboa Sapphire reach out because they saw that I was running for office and they exasperated all avenues that they thought they could do. Inside of our lovely charter, we actually have sections that address all situations, both for homes that are derelict. And also, I would, based off of what to me, what was going on or what is going on over in the Sapphire. And it's basically, it's chapter nine, health and sanitation. And we also have mitigation in place that there's a 15 day period by which after inspection that they are supposed to mediate. If they don't, then we are able to enforce up to $2,000 a day. Unless stipulated by the state of Texas, we'll be able to, if there's a cap, we have to go to that cap. But up to $2,000 a day. So I appreciate everything that has been done. But I don't think enough has been done to take care of those people who live in Nassau Bay. And I include the renters inside of the residents. They're here. They're part of us. It should never get as bad as it's gotten. And I think that inside of the homes, yes, we've had the hurricanes, we've had some fires. We need to be compassionate with people in relationship to what's going on. We can bend the rules, but don't break them. And we shouldn't let owners take advantage of them, particularly in the context of enforcing something that's going on in an apartment complex where it's been now, I think about four years ago, we were sold and we were promised that things were going to happen and change. We got painted. Then all of a sudden, another person bought it. Then all of a sudden, we had the fire and then look what the condition is now and we have a new owner. So I think it's onus sits inside of the city and the city council to actually enforce the regulations that are in place. And that is chapter nine, health and sanitation and section one through six, which is general penalties and continuing violations, which can be enforced and actually should be enforced if they're not.
And it brings up something I brought up in the last form as well, though, particularly when it comes to, you know, there are Supreme Court decisions on the way about condemning houses and tearing them down. There's also on the apartment side of things. And again, there's a state representative who owns a lot of apartment complexes, represents a lot of those as a lawyer, but at the same time is writing the laws that are that are kind of hamstringing some of the of the communities across the way, not just, and I'm not talking about Nassau Bay where I first came across that issue was elsewhere. So that becomes kind of a challenge is waiting through all the enforcement. And sometimes that slowness is because of that. And then it is, James, you just pointed it out, the whack a mole situation where is, oh, owner, oh, wait, now we have a new owner. Oh, wait, another new owner. You're trying to find who it is and it's, you can't attach to the property. You got to go after the owner and that becomes the tough thing there. We've we've already gone an hour and 15 minutes, but I want to get into what will be kind of the last topic for us here tonight. I know we could keep going for a while. It's short term rentals. This is also was a very lively conversation before. And I know that, you know, in Nassau Bay tried to address this early on, but there's been recent incidents, not only in Texas, but across the nation in which we have seen STRs become part of national news with parties leading to mass shootings and the like. We had an own incident here in which there was a party held at a short term rental place in which there was a shooting there. Again, and based, I want to stress what I said in the first form. That was the people who were having the party actually throwing someone out saying, you weren't invited. You're not supposed to be here. You're trouble. And that person is the one who shot shot at the house. No one was hit, but you know, that was the situation with that. But it is something, it was a hot topic in Galveston when I did their forum last week. Let me just ask, and I'll start with you on this one, James. You know, what what more does the city, and let's kind of keep our answers a little more concise just. Before before your spouses, loved ones wonder what I've done with y'all. It just to kind of address that issue here as you see it.
Yeah. So you bring up a really good point, TJ, and this is important for people to understand, you know, for us, we have people have come in. We've got homes that are being flipped. You've got people that are buying these and then putting up, you know, kind of like Airbnb situations. And I think you really nailed it when you said there is somebody who is doing some of that legislation right now. And so, you know, two things that have been done to address and unfortunately was started in 2017 was Senate Bill 451, which has an accompanying House Bill 2551. I recommend that people look at those and that is actually addressing it from the state level down. But as you know, or if you don't know, unfortunately, once you get a bill in, it takes quite some time to go through session and it goes to committee and it progresses. So that was back 2017. But with that, one thing that I think is really interesting is that the municipalities can actually put in place and enforce certain regulations on those types of rentals. And it has been done in other places. I know that Dallas, Fort Worth and some of these other larger cities have done that. I agree with you, TJ. I think that we've got to look at these things. And if it is a situation where we're having issues, we have to address it and address it as municipality and put those regulations in place because it's a new environment. It's we didn't have these before. And we have to address that. And we can't wait, or we shouldn't wait for the state to put something in place. And if they do something well with that, then great, we'll utilize it. But for now, we need to be looking at what we can do to protect the values of the homes, protect the the people that are here and ensure that, you know, services are provided properly. And, you know, we're making sure that the city progresses forward and and actually, you know, you're not detracting from the value. You're not detracting from the valuation of those homes. But you're doing it a way that's going to be beneficial. I think it would roll back onto some of that codes that go in place and code enforcement with the people that own those homes.
And Charles, one of the things too on that, on what's existing now is kind of the three strikes, you're out rule. You know, you have to be licensed. There's the software the city is using that's kind of scraping all the Airbnbs, VRBOs and, you know, and trying to find these along the way. And then there's also a hot tax, you know, hotel motel tax that's collected by the city on that. But, you know, do you think the regulations go far enough? Or do you need to get a little bit further to get closer to what the state does allow?
Yeah, that's that's tough to say, TJ. You know, there are some pretty stringent laws against murder, right? And it still happens. You know, so at the end of the day, I think it always comes down to the people, your ability to reach the people, communicate it, communicate with them in a way that's effective and get them to adhere to what you're for and not necessarily for what you're against. You know, we could have a long list of all the things that we're against in Nassau Bay and go on forever and then fight that that battle forever. And I just don't think that's a good approach. Now, I also would never say that having short term rentals is right for our neighborhood because there's obviously evidence out there in which it's not right for some communities. And so what we have to do is sit down and ask the right questions and decide together, involve the people in the decisions that impact them, decide to what extent we need to have rules, regulations and laws, but then be hyper focused on communicating and interacting with the people in order to make sure that it goes smoothly. But there's been something terrible happen in every type of building in the world. And there's nothing we can do to stop that. So the question is, can we mitigate the risk of that happening here by making sure we're as prepared as possible and involving as many smart people as we can in the decisions that address it?
Gotcha. John, same question to you about STRs.
You know, Texas has a very long storied history of protecting property rights. And I think there is a default, certainly at the state level that goes towards folks who want to utilize the this new opportunity of short term rentals as property owners and they have a certain amount of rights to that. And in a microcosm, short term rentals seem like a great idea. I think most of us have stayed in an Airbnb somewhere at this point. But when it becomes a community of short term rentals, you lose a lot of your own community to that. So to me, our biggest concern really is it becoming prolific throughout the city and having all of these properties where we then have disponent owners who own property, but don't live here. And all of a sudden, you've lost that connection with your neighbors and the neighborhood that we have here. I'm not aware of the the bill that James referenced, but I, we have initially tried to go very hard and we were strongly recommended to avoid putting rules in place. The city of Austin had been taken to the Supreme Court against that and it did not look good for them. And so we were told as a smaller city, better let a lot of this work itself out in court instead of getting ourselves sued. Because as you referenced earlier, there are people who actually work for us in city, state government, who actively sue small cities to their to their benefit. We have done what we believe we can do legally to regulate these now by by putting in the requirements that we're, this has just been done in in the last year, year and a half, I think it is at this point. It will bear some fruit. I think it does a little bit to make sure folks stay on the on the side of being responsible owners. If you're going to actually own a business that's called a short term rental, that you take responsibility for that property and the people that you lease and have at your home. I don't think it's enough, but I'm not sure we are in a position yet that we can do anything about it. For me, it would be advocating at our local level to our Congress and representatives and the state senate that we need stronger provisions for that. Currently, the state has been imposing further strictures on cities and counties as to what they can do about these these topics. I'm hoping we can swing the tide back the other way because this becomes a bigger issue. We've seen entire communities that are short term rentals. I believe Galveston suffers suffers significantly from this as well. We don't want those problems here. We need to maintain the character of Nassau Bay. Short term rentals, I think, takes away from that.
Yeah, one of the things I in doing the Galveston forum, it was this kind of debate because there was this kind of culture on the island like, well, if you had a beach house on the West End, you're kind of used to those were being rented out on a regular basis. Whether it was like a weekend or a week at a time type thing, not a kind of a daily change over like a hotel. And they've been trying to balance that as well. And Mark Denham, it brought this up in the last forum is that, yeah, let's let the big cities get sued first and then we'll figure it out, you know, what comes out in the wash afterwards. Um, real quick, this will be kind of a show of hands of which side you you may sit on this issue and not ask this in the last forum, I ask y'all. The the art piece that sits on Nassar Road one and at Space Center has has, it just frankly hasn't worked, particularly when it comes to electrical. There's different options being looked at right now. One is take it down. One is spend more money to fix it. And I even heard someone suggest just turn off the light switch and just don't see it at night from there. Just real quickly, a quick answer from each of you. I'll start with you, John, then James, then Charles. Where do you stand on that on that art piece? A lot of money went in to put that thing in in the first place, John?
Right. I think there's an old joke about, I don't know good art, but I'll know it when I see it. You know, the it was a wonderfully presented project, a marriage between Nassau Bay and NASA. We loved the idea. The execution was was lacking. I am not for spending a whole bunch of additional money to take it down. I would try to rectify the issue, do something else with it. But, you know, this was our first foray into public art. It did not go as well as planned. I don't think the the solution is to regress and say, let's get rid of public art altogether.
Gotcha. James?
Yeah, real quick, I didn't really know what it was, but I did know there was on text, text dot installed it in a ditch that has prominence to flood. And with that, I'm not sure if you need to worry about if it's going to fall down or not, but it it may, so it could be a health and safety issue. I would have thought that if we were going to do something like that, we would have put it in Nassau Bay right across where you could see it. But, you know, I can't say one way or another what the best approach is to remedy that. But I think that what does make sense is putting out to the public and asking them, asking the residents of what how they feel about it and letting them decide because it was their money that was spent. So I think that's important.
Charles?
Yeah, my answer is not far out from there. I mean, this is a clear example of not involving the people in decisions that impact them. Right? And so at the end of the day, taking a step like this into a public art was a great idea, as long as you had subject matter experts on the team. Right? And and people involved in the in the in the citizens involved in the decision. And so if if that happened, well, then we might have a different outcome. And so I would say immediately get together a group of smart people. We've got plenty of them in Nassau Bay. Let's come up with a good solution and let's execute it with fidelity.
Gotcha.
One thing I wondered, in this case, not our money. It was hot tax funding, taxes that were done that. It's actually people that visit Nassau Bay that paid for that.
Well, even worse, we don't want to take somebody else's money to spend that to do that. Come on.
Right, now we're caves.
And I hear that in Galveston a lot. Someone points out, says, yeah, we still collect it. You know, then it becomes our money. So at that point, so that becomes part of the issue. But yeah, it's fair enough that it's that overlay district that that use hot taxes on that. Gentlemen, thank y'all so much for being a part of this here tonight. As I said, I was going to try to get this out less than 90 minutes and I failed. It's a, yeah, well, y'all had lively discussion too. I mean, that was that was good. And we touched on some different topics that we didn't talk, touch on in the first forum there. So it's for those of you that I drew this live the time before. But we did this before we went on air this time around and we drew for the order and then, you know, for order for folks to decide which order we would go. So our closing statements will first be James Abbey, then John Mahon, and then and then Charles Pulliam will go at the end here. And we'll so we'll start with you, James, up to three minutes. And gentlemen, if I can have you just turn off your mic while the others are speaking. Up to three minutes for you, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'd like to thank my the other candidates and I appreciate them running for office. I think it's important that everybody leans in and what we do here in Nassau Bay and particularly participates. It's a unique opportunity for us to be able to be in front of everyone. And I thank you, TJ, for that that ability. The way I grew up here in Nassau Bay, back in the day, there were a lot of things that weren't here, there were a lot of things that were here. There are constituents that have lived here their whole lives and are still here. And we have new families. I think that it's important that we have a city council that's diversified. We have a city council that can address what the concerns are of the city. But more importantly, I think that actually look around and know how to collaborate with these other communities that we're working in. Invest in what we need to, which is infrastructure. Invest in these collaborations like we talked about in regards to Galveston Bay where we sit with the Clear Lake itself. And I think that, you know, where I stand is that I'm a younger generation. I've got three children ranging in the age of four, all the way up to 11 years old. I invested here. I moved back here after being away. I believe I bring some fantastic skill sets that can bear fruit for Nassau Bay. My ability to go out to federal, state and county and collaborate is what I've done my whole career. And that's why I'd like to bring to Nassau Bay. You know, I'm not one for long speeches on this one, TJ, but I believe that I could do quite a bit to help us and the city council and a new city manager, you know, turn us into a city that we all be proud of. And I think we are proud of it, but I think we could do a lot more, particularly with the next couple of years that we need to be focusing on with these investments like the Ike Dyke or the barrage, the infrastructure money that we have that we need to spend, the ability of what's going on in regards to the waterways. There's a lot of things that play into effect here and I think that I could bring some fantastic insight and views to what the community. and views to what the community needs. But more importantly, be able to listen and spend the time with the community, set up the surgeries, listen to folks, be able to then, in the executive sessions, bring forward concerns and have a respectable debate, a civil debate about things, and actually focus on delivering programs and projects for Nassau Bay in a way that we expect them to be done. With that, I think this is going to be a hard fight for the election. And I think I've got two wonderful candidates that, you know, I would be hard swayed not to vote for. But, you know, with that, gentlemen, I have to say, you know, I wish everybody luck in this. And I think that it's going to be a difficult decision for the residents to make on the candidates for position four. And TJ, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to spend time with you guys and also to listen to my other candidates in regards to what they bring to the table too. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Appreciate your time here tonight. All right, John, up to three minutes for you now, sir.
Okay, TJ, again, thank you for doing this. I think this is a great service, not only for the candidates to actually get a chance to speak to the community, but for the community to get a much better sense of people and their visions for it and what you've heard over the last 90 minutes. And if you were strong enough to listen to the 90 minutes before us, you heard a lot of people who have a love of this neighborhood, who want to see it thrive. They want to grow their families here. I got here a little over 23 years ago with my five children, and they've all grown up here. This has been our home. We've had catastrophe visit us here in Nassau Bay. And that's really when I, the watermark, maybe a poor choice of words, but for me was the people of Nassau Bay, when catastrophe struck, they were there. They were the first responders. They were the folks that brought ice and food and took the small children while you were mucking out your house. They were the ones that brought clothes or said, I will wash what you have because, so that you can continue what you're doing. It just was this indelible spirit that, for me, is the mark of what makes Nassau Bay such a wonderful place to be and why we're all here. I certainly hope when this is done, the gentleman, both Charles and James, joins a men's group with us. I think we would enjoy spending more time together and discussing things. So I've really enjoyed this evening and the opportunity to listen to both my competitors, we'll call each other. But what you've heard was three gentlemen who want what's best for Nassau Bay. I think we all have a specific view on some of the things that we can do that. But there's no doubt that each of us are doing this as a volunteer specifically because we love this community and we want what's best for this community. For me, I spent eight years on city council. Before that, you know, 17 full years of volunteerism at the local level as well. From my business background, it's logistics, it's the Port of Houston. You know, I recognize the long-term needs of this city and recognize that it's not going to be enough just to show up to a couple of council meetings here. We are going to have to roll up our sleeves and truly work with the area and the state to get us to a point where we continue to have a place that will be desired by others for years to come. So with that, my name is John Mayon, and I would hope I could get your support, folks, for position four and allow me to represent the community again. Everyone.
Thank you, John. And Charles?
All right, well, thank you.
I'll say, but it's actually going to be me when you're wrapped up, so everybody hang on there for a second.
Well, I wouldn't have it any other way, TJ. You're much better at this than me. And I want to tell you, my friend, ever since first meeting you a few years back, man, you've been nothing but a gentleman to me. And I appreciate your friendship, and I appreciate the way you handle yourself and your business. And so I just want to thank you for that. And for James and John, thank you guys for being willing to answer the call, to stand up and lead in the community that is full of people that have high demands for that leadership, but they're very much committed to preserving our way of life as I know we are. You know, one I would share with everyone there is I have dealt with people, and it's no evidence that I'll be able to continue to do that, other than the fact that I've been down the road of dealing with people and managing conflict and coming up with good ideas and setting strategic plans and executing those plans with excellence literally around the world. People is what I do. I believe in a government like it was originally established to be in America, by the people, for the people. I don't believe that necessarily more legislation, more red tape, more bureaucracy is the right way to go necessarily, certainly not the only way to go in managing city government. I believe we need people in city council that have the ears to hear people and the eyes to see issues. And that they have the boldness and the confidence to step forward in a way that is representative of the people regardless of what the people say. I know that we've got some tough issues to face, but ladies and gentlemen, I served this country for eight years of my life. Some of the things that I had the chance to see really do pale in comparison. I'm not dismissing what we're dealing with, but I do know that if I could go through some of the things I did, I certainly can help lead this city. And so I hope that you will allow me to involve the people, meaning you, in the decisions that impact you. As we move forward, we make decisions together, we solve problems together. One of the things that I will hope you remember, that as I go forward in city government, if I'm blessed to do so, that I will always remember that nothing said is everything, but everything said is something. Meaning I will not approach things as if I know it all. I will always be willing to listen. I won't let my learning get in the way of listening, or the things I've learned get in the way of listening. I won't let my thoughts get in the way of thinking. I won't let my qualifications get in the way of query or asking questions. And I won't let the position that I take get in the way of making progress. And it's an honor just to be considered for the opportunity to lead this great city. I too have aspirations to have, I've got a brand-new grandson that was just born nine days ago. I want him to be able to live here as I have. So thank you so much. Have a great Nassau Bay day.
Thank you all for tonight. Lively discussions, I said, and I appreciate it. And if we do the men's club thing, let me know. I'll hang out with you guys as well, all three of you. By the way, as I said before, I know John a little bit, but I've known Charles for a couple of years, and we see each other out in the community. And James, obviously, I know your family very well. As we jokingly said before we start, you were the mystery brother as we referred to so many times because you were always out of town for stuff. And as you say, you know, no bias, you know, toward you or something. I'm a great fan of your father's. He was always great to me when he's the director of the Johnson Space Center when I covered it. So that was, that gives my age away a little bit there along the way. So thank you all. Reminder to you voters, April 25th, that's next Monday, starts early voting. Election Day is May 7th. We'll have a link up, obviously, for the polling locations in Harris County, where during early voting and day of, you can go vote at any of those locations you want. And we'll have that up. So if you're out working and about, then you can go to some of the other locations. Also too, I was remiss in mentioning this in the first forum, but we have a big moment coming up for the city of Nassau Bay on April 29th. Our police chief is finally getting married to his fiance. Tim Cromie is getting married to his fiance, Judge Carrie Foley. And so, and those of us who have known Tim for many, many years, which I have, and so I just want to wish them well because their wedding is next week as well. So if anything, I think Tim is more relieved that a new city manager has been hired so he can focus a little more time, even though Paul's not going to be here till June 1st. He can focus a little more time on getting ready for the wedding coming up on the 29th, and I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you, gentlemen, for being all with us tonight. And thank you for watching, folks. A reminder to you, soon as this broadcast, this streamcast is over, it'll be available for replay, as is the other one. It's already up and running, so you can share the links to folks. It is on our Facebook pages as well as our YouTube and Twitter pages for I-45 now, so you can share those. So it doesn't, you don't have to be a Facebook-only person to get this. You can distribute it as you will. Thank you again, gentlemen. Appreciate it. I'm TJ. All is I-45 now.